Good evening. It's six o'clock and I'm calling to order the Placerville Planning Commission regular meeting for Tuesday, November 19th, 2024. If you would please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you very much. Would you please call the roll, Ms. Hunter?
Vice Chair Carter.
Present.
Commissioner Friend.
Present.
Chair Keeney.
Here.
Commissioner Lepper.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Everyone is in attendance. Thank you very much. We have no closed session reports, and our next item is the adoption of the agenda.
Move to adopt. Move to adopt.
Motion from Commissioner Friend and a second from Ms. Lepper. Any discussion about the agenda? All right, seeing none, all in favor of adopting the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, unanimous, 5-0. Next is our consent calendar. Considered routine and evacted by general consent, unless any commissioner requests, roll call vote, any member of the commission, staff or audience wishes to remove an item for discussion. Would anyone like to move anything from our minutes, the only item on our consent calendar for discussion?
Move adoption.
We have a motion to move from Mr. Commissioner Friend?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, thank you very much. Nothing was pulled from our consent calendar, so next is items of interest to the public and public comment on non-agenda items. This portion of the meeting is reserved for any person who's wishing to address the commission on a matter not on the agenda and the subject matter is within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. Would anyone in the public like to comment on an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to written communications, non-agenda items. As far as I know, we have none?
We have none.
We have no non-agenda items, written communications. We have no presentations or educational workshops tonight, although we do have a very full agenda, so we'll move on to 10, which is the environmental assessments and public hearings. 10.1 is conditional use, CUP 24-03, and site plan review, SPR 24-05, for Cornerstone House of Prayer. This is a request to permit the establishment of a place of worship and various and sundry things associated with that. So I will turn it over to you, Ms. Hunter, for the staff report.
Thank you. The subject request by the Cornerstone House of Prayer includes, one, approval of a conditional use permit to allow for the establishment of a place of worship at the parcel addressed 2020 Smith Flat Road, located within the R1 10,000 single-family residential and airport overlay zone; and, two, a site plan review to permit the placement of a sealand container within the existing parking lot and memorialization of the exterior elevations of the structure. So of note, staff became aware of an error on page one of the staff report within the summary table indicating the parcel as commercial for both the general plan land use designation and zoning. As mentioned earlier, the parcel is zoned R110 AO with a land use designation of low-density residential. The project was noticed correctly, and the error has no effect on staff's analysis, findings, or recommendations included in the staff report. So for some background on the subject property, the structure located at 2020 Smith Flat Road was previously used as the Hangtown Grange Hall, which allowed for institutional uses, including but not limited to nonprofit meetings, weddings, dances, and banquets. It is the opinion of staff that the Cornerstone House of Prayer is similar to the previous use of the property, is consistent with the city's general plan, and would not be detrimental to the surrounding properties and land uses. The proposed amendments to the building's exterior provide architectural interest and improve the overall pedestrian orientation from Smith Flat Road, including the screening of the sealand container from the right-of-way. Regarding the required onsite parking, the city's parking and loading ordinance requires a place of worship to have one parking stall for each four seats at maximum capacity. As shown in Figure 5 of the staff report and Sheet A1 of Attachment 3, the Cornerstone House of Prayer proposes a total of 108 fixed seats within the congregation hall and 48 seats within the fellowship hall, resulting in a need of 39 onsite parking stalls. The site, as shown in the site plan, has 43 parking spaces. However, of the 43 stalls, 16 are located within the city's right-of-way and require cars to back up onto Smith Flat Road, resulting in a safety hazard. Additionally, nine stalls are considered overflow parking and are within a gravelled area on the westernmost side of the parcel. The city's Smith Flat Road Storm Drain and Paving Project, CIP Project Number 42213, is anticipated to be constructed in 2025 and would include drainage improvements along the frontage of the parcel that would affect parking spaces within the right-of-way. Given the planned improvements and non-compliance with the requirements for onsite parking, staff has included condition of approval number three regarding the need for a revised parking plan to address the concerns highlighted within the staff report. This condition requires the paving and striping of the gravelled area to accommodate the 12 additional spaces to meet the required total onsite parking. So based on the analysis included in the staff report, staff recommends that the Planning Commission, one, adopt the staff report as part of the public record; two, find the project request exempt from environmental review pursuant to California Environmental Quality Act, Guideline Sections 15303; three, make the findings in support of the conditional use permit request; four, make the findings in support of the site plan review request; and five, conditionally approve CUP 24-03 and SPR 24-05 based on the project information and findings included in the staff report and subject to the recommended conditions of approval included in Attachments 1 and 2 of the staff report. This concludes staff's report.
Thank you very much. Let's see, I did have just a few minor questions, mostly about timing. The, this site is very constrained with the parking, and so you made that very clear in the report, and as I understand it, that parking is to all be placed where, in the area that's called the overflow parking area, right? At least label that on the current site plans.
Yes, the additional required parking outside of the right-of-way.
Right, outside of the, okay, and so that's, I think that addresses the problem, but one thing I was wondering about is the timeframe on, in Attachment 2, number three, applicant shall submit to Development Services a revised parking plan to accommodate these stalls. Yeah, what about the timeframe, since where your staff report discusses that work out there on the roadway in 2025? Have you talked with the applicant about the timing to make sure that they have their parking in place before the roadway and other areas impacted?
I believe the parking would, and Pierre, you can correct me, but I believe the parking would be required to be finalized prior to occupancy, or we would be working with the applicant prior to occupancy on that.
All right, good. I don't, you know, I don't want to cause a problem, you know, just as we're getting started on the improvements there on the roadway. So that's what I had. Do any of the other commissioners have questions about the staff report?
I just got a couple of questions for you. This is the first time that I can recall seeing the word memorialize, and so if you could explain that to me. I think I understand what you mean, but it shows up several times, but I mean, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna interpret it to mean we're establishing exactly what it's going to look like.
Well, what you have currently is a, what we would call a legal non-conforming use. So the property zone, R110, it's single-family residential, but it was a Grange Hall for, and I don't, I can't recall when that Grange Hall was first established, but it's, it's very old.
Yeah, it's in the report somewhere.
So we typically look at those as an institutional use. So now we have a church that wants to locate within, you know, use this space, use the same building within an R110 zone. We allow churches in all zones under a conditional use permit. So with the conditional use permit, we can look at signage, we can look at all aspects of the use, considering the fact that it was already pretty much an institutional use, and this, the scale of this church will match what was the Hangtown Grange. So we use the term memorialize, meaning under the CUP and a site plan review for any additional parking, we will then have elevations, site plan, parking plan, to memorialize what was existing and then what's proposed, what's appropriate for a church in a residential zone.
Ah, okay, so we're acknowledging how it has been used and what it looked like, et cetera, and it is a legal non-conforming use, again, that was mentioned in the staff report. Now we're memorializing that this is how it will be. Is that basically what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, then the other question, kind of along the lines of the use, and the staff report, you know, in several places indicates that the structure was last used as the Hangtown Grange, and the proposed use is going to be very similar, doesn't present a problem. Why, and I'm not, not opposed to this, but why then are we calling them out on the air conditioning unit? If we didn't do that to the Grange, why, and the use is similar, why are we doing it now?
Because this, this current application before you is a discretionary application, so you'll be approving then the conditional use permits.
Okay, and I know that is, that is one of our requirements and-
So it has to maintain, you know-
Sure, fair enough. Thank you, Pierre.
Anyone have other questions?
Mine was about parking, so you covered it.
Okay. No? My, in looking through my notes, I came across one more concern I had. I have, I routinely walk near the facility when I'm on the Elder Auto Trail, and there is currently a trailer out there, and I understand from the staff report that that was necessary for safety. Yet, we're not allowing a residence according to our, let's see, that's in Attachment 1. So have you talked to the applicant about how they can ensure safety of the site without having someone in residence there?
I would say rather than safety, I would characterize it as security of the site. So in my speaking with the pastor of the church, he informed me that they've been having break-ins, basically some homeless people trying to break into the building. There's a lot of that in that vicinity and in the area. So we approved a watchman's, what I would call a watchman's quarters, which is permitted under our code, is a temporary use permit. So once they've received occupancy and then they're using the facility, then the temporary watchman quarters would leave the premises.
And that will be within the building envelope, the watchman's quarters, or is that-
No, the watchman's quarters is a recreational vehicle that's parked on the, I think it's on the east side of the building.
Okay, so it's there?
It's there.
That's what's there. So that's going to continue to be there?
It will remain until they receive their certificate of occupancy and then they start running their church.
It's there because, right now, because the facility is not, although it's-
It's the site's sort of vacant.
And modified is not in your use. Okay, now I understand.
Yeah, it's only temporary.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
That was a separate application that was approved at the staff level.
Okay.
I just have one more question for staff, yeah. So as far as the calculation for parking, so there's 108 seats within the congregation hall and 48 within the fellowship hall. This will be a question for the applicant later, but I'm assuming that those two areas are not going to be used simultaneously at any time. Does this commission have any leeway as far as not conditioning the parking based on all of the seating, or can we separate those two rooms since they will probably never be used at the same time? Or are we forced to base parsing, base the parking on the total occupancy available?
They do have a gravelled parking area that they're going to have to pave, and they, they'll utilize that, and they'll have to utilize that once the city commences with its CIP project, putting in the drainage improvement. So it's going to take out some of the parking in front, but they will be able to meet the required parking onsite. So we, staff doesn't consider parking to be an issue.
And the calculation for required parking is based on all seats that are offered and there at all times, and that's true for all applications?
Understood. Thank you. That was my question. Thank you.
Okay. No further questions? All right. Thank you very much for addressing our concerns about the staff report. At this time, we'd like to ask the applicant to step up to the podium, to add anything that you would like to about the application, or if you have any clarifications that you want to provide, and then we also will open this up for comments from the public about the application. So is the applicant here? Good evening.
I don't really know what to add to that.
Okay, that's fine. If there's any clarification or any details you want to bring to our attention, we appreciate it.
We could clarify that we rented from the Grange since 2007, and we rented there for 15 years and before we purchased the building from them. And then I didn't know we couldn't allow to, to continue to have church there. So we went and we got the conditional use permit while it was still in escrow, actually, and started working on it. I thought we were doing it for the tax purposes, but anyway, so I didn't know we couldn't have until we had an inspector show up. So that's, that's for clarification. It's, it's not like we were, just bought it and just went there and started having church. We had been having church there since 2007, every week. So just for clarification.
And I just wanted to comment, as I mentioned, I walked by the facility, and the improvements you've made are really nice to the, the old Grange Hall, which, you know, it served this purpose, but wasn't very welcoming. So I think the design is good, and I hope that it serves you and your congregation well. Do any of the commissioners have any questions for our applicant?
Yeah, I do, thank you, Madam Chair. So I appreciate you bringing that point up because that was, and I may go back to staff on this. I didn't catch it until now. You, as you indicated, you were renting from the Grange and you were using the property as you intend to use it now.
Correct.
That didn't require any kind of a conditional use permit? Were they working under the conditional use permit of the Grange, or how did that work?
The Grange was a legal non-conforming use, so it never went underneath a discretionary review because it was in existence prior.
Okay, so-
So this is an establishment of a church, whereas they were renting from the Grange Hall, which offered more, I guess, options for use.
Okay.
So this is establishing it as a place of worship.
So then, just to be clear, because I'm looking at page 2 of the staff report, you did not realize, when you met with the staff in late 2022, early 2023, you did not realize that you would have to have a conditional use permit to conduct your services? And did staff indicate to them they would have to stop until such time as they got a CUP? And the only reason I bring this up, to be perfectly frank, and I'll be as respectful as I can, is, is one of the conditions is you're not allowed to use the kitchen to prepare food, you're, make food, you can't cook food. You can, you can reheat and do some other things, right? You're not allowed to use the kitchen as a kitchen to prepare foods from, from scratch. And, you know, yet, it, I was, it just struck me that you were told by the city, okay, before you can do your services, you have to go through this process, and then an inspector comes out sometime later and finds out that you're, you're already using the property. So, so that becomes an issue of trust, because if we put this condition in, if you can't use the kitchen as a, as a full kitchen, you know, we don't want to have to be running inspections and all of that. So I'm just trying to get at the level where the confusion was about-
If, if I might, regarding the kitchen, it was actually in the applicant's application that they indicated they would not be using the kitchen. It would just be-
Fair enough, but my, my point is, though, they came to staff and staff instructed them, notified them, you need to have a CUP before you can start using the property, but then they started using the property. And I just want to understand where the confusion may have come on, an honest level of confusion. That's, that's my question. So I'll read-
Yeah, we, escrow closed October 31st of 2022, and then we were, the inspector came out in March of this year, 2024. We didn't know till then.
Okay, but you didn't know, again, it's in the staff report that, that you met with staff and they told you that you needed to have a CUP?
In March of this year.
March of 2024?
Yeah, and, but we had already been working on the conditional use permit.
That doesn't, that doesn't comport with what's in the report.
Yes, if I might, there, there was a representative, different than Mr. Thorson, who came into the DSD offices to submit for a CUP. Unfortunately, at the time when it was submitted at that point, it was incomplete, so we rejected it with a requirement to have a complete site plan. Unfortunately, you know, time, time passed, and the issue in March came because work was being completed on the property without-
Right, I, I get that, okay.
And so that's where the loss of occupancy occurred.
Okay. I'm, I'm just trying to figure out how the applicant didn't realize they needed the CUP before they could do stuff. And it sounds like you have a different, you had a different representative than you have now, and it's what, kind of what happened. Pierre's shaking his head at me.
What happened is we saw construction without a building permit. That's what shed the light on the whole thing.
Right, but my, my point is, Pierre, that according to the staff report, the applicant was told, you, you have to get a CUP before you can do anything, and that was in 2022, 2023. So now, well over a year later, you guys, you find there's construction going on. They haven't got the CUP, but, and so they're using the property even when they were told that they can't. That, that's my point. So it becomes a matter of trust with the applicant. Then I see there's this other thing in here with the kitchen, and so it's a matter of, of trust. We accept, take people at their word, that they're going to comply with the conditions that we lay down. Do you follow what I'm saying? So, anyway, I won't beat this any harder. I'm not opposed to the project, please don't misunderstand, but I, I read through the reports and, you know, things come up, and so I need clarification. So thank you for indulging me, Madam Chair.
My pleasure. Have your questions addressed? Okay. Any other questions for the applicants from other commissioners? I want to thank you for coming down and taking some time to talk to us and, and answer these questions. And so please take a seat, and at this time, I'd like to open this hearing up to members of the public who would like to address the commission on the project. If you do have a comment about this particular item, please come up to the podium, and if you would, please state your name for the record. And we ask that if you do have comments, if you could limit them to about three minutes. Would anyone like to address the commission on this topic? Okay, seeing no one, I will close the public comment portion of this hearing and bring it back to the commission for consideration and possible action. So I think we have our, our concerns addressed between comments from the applicant and staff, and I have no further discussion. Really, it's very straightforward, as I said, I walked by and it's, it's clear what the final project will look like from the street with, you know, a few changes that we've talked about, screening and so on. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to move forward with this?
I'll make a motion, and I'll just add my comment that I really appreciated the narrative and the commitment to improvement that you've stated in your application. So thank you for that and for your commitment to our, our community. Anyone else ready, or I'll go ahead and make a motion? Okay, great. So I would like to make the motion that we adopt the staff record as part of the, the staff report as part of the public record, that the project is exempt from environmental review under SEQA Section 15303, and that make the following findings in support of conditional use permit, CUP 24-03, items number one through four on page 12 of the staff report, as well as make the following findings in support of the site plan review, SPR 24-05, items number one through six as listed on page 13 of the staff report, and to conditionally approve CUP 24-03 and SPR 24-05 based on the project information and findings included in the staff report and subject to the recommended conditions of approval included in Attachments 1 and 2 of the staff report dated November 19th, 2024. Did I need to make a reference to your change on page one, or is that covered? Your commercial to R110?
I was actually going to recommend the, staff report as amended as part of the public record.
Staff report as amended. To change the description on page one to list the general plan and zoning as R110 AO rather than commercial. Did that hit? Okay.
We have a motion?
Second. No, I defer to Mr. Carter.
I will second that.
And a second from Mr. Carter. Okay, any further discussion about the motion?
I just want to acknowledge that in the staff report, it talks about how this use is an improvement to the general area, and I concur with that comment. So despite my vigorous interrogation of a few moments ago, I just want to reiterate, I'm not opposed to the use and support the project.
Okay. Any other comments?
I was going to second it.
Go get the next one.
Got to jump on that. I'll, I'll look your way next time. I apologize. And perhaps we shouldn't be so quick with the trigger. Anyway, we have motion and second, no further discussion. Ms. Hunter, would you please call the roll?
Vice Chair Carter.
Aye.
Commissioner Friend.
Aye.
Chair Keeney.
Aye.
Commissioner Lepper.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Okay. It is unanimous. Thank you very much. Congratulations. All actions taken here on these matters are subject to a ten-day appeal period, but as we have said several times, this is a, a good project for our community. I don't anticipate any problems, and we wish you best of luck, and thank you very much. Okay.
Get it from the church.
Okay, we'll give everybody a few minutes to, and none of them talked. Okay. Give me a moment to get organized here, and then- What was that? We will, we'll move on to item 10.2. This is a conditional use permit, CUP 24-05, for the Lu Jean hardship manufactured home, consideration of a conditional use permit request to temporary place and use a 994-square-foot manufactured home as an additional dwelling on the property. And I will turn it over again to you, Ms. Hunter, for the staff report.
Thank you. So Planning Commission approval is required for a temporary hardship mobile home pursuant to zoning ordinance Section 10-4-6, specifically as the approval of a temporary hardship mobile home relieves the property owner of impact fees, including water, sewer, traffic mitigation, and park fees. It should be noted that temporary hardship mobile homes require specific findings, including the verification of a hardship connected with a health condition, and require annual verification and inspections. The hardship mobile home shall be terminated if the finding of hardship no longer exists. At such time, the hardship mobile home would be required to be removed from the property or to be permitted as a permanent use, in this case, an accessory dwelling unit. The subject request involves the temporary placement of a 994-square-foot manufactured home as an additional dwelling unit on the property addressed 951 Rent Court. Based on the analysis in the staff report, staff recommends that the Planning Commission affirm the findings based on the applicant's request and subject to the conditions of the project approval. Staff's analysis of the request can be found on pages four through six of the staff report. As such, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt the staff report as part of the public record, find the request exempt from environmental review pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, Section 15303, make the findings in support of the conditional use permit request, and conditionally approve CUP 24-05 based on the project information and findings included in the staff report and subject to the recommended conditions of approval included in Attachment 1. Of note, staff did receive two written public comments on the project. Copies of those comments were distributed prior to the meeting and can be found on the back counter. This concludes staff's report.
Thank you very much. This is a little different topic for us to consider, and I thank you for taking, addressing all the concerns in your staff report. It was very well done. This is possibly, probably not something that you have any experience with. It's kind of technical, I guess. The, this particular- The, this particular project is going to be placed on-site using Xi2 tie-down system as opposed to the permanent foundation. And you've discussed that this is part of the temporary nature of this particular dwelling. So what I'm concerned about is to make sure that that's actually going to be safe. Is that, I guess, that's a system, and so do you know anything about it? And can you allay my concerns about the safety, especially since we're having an atmospheric river-bomb cyclone headed our way tomorrow?
I'm not sure I'm the best person to speak about that. I did speak with our building official at length about this to make sure we could make this finding. And I know that the contractor is here and the representative is here in the audience, so they might be able to answer better.
Great. Thank you very much. Let's see. The other question I had for you is under the conditions of approval. Number two, is it incredibly obvious, and I just don't know this, that the premises shall be inspected annually, property owners shall provide written verification regarding the medical hardship? Does that go to development services? Should, or is that painfully obvious to anyone who needs to do this, or should we specify that in our condition? This is because it's new to me, and I'm not really sure how it gets handled. It just doesn't say. And, you know, it's a small city. I'm sure they would find the right person to deliver this to.
Yeah, you can certainly modify it if it seems unclear to you that it's to be submitted with their renewal application to Development Services Department.
I think I would feel comfortable with that in case this comes to us again. And then we have kind of our template, and everyone, it's very clear to them what the process is and what department they hand this off to. Because I think that's a very critical component of this application is this temporary use for the dwelling. Should it be converted to an ADU, then other factors come into play, and so then it becomes a completely ministerial review, because then it's the ADU side of things. So, thank you. Anyone else have a question about the staff report? No. Okay. So at this time, I'd like to open this up to the public hearing portion. And I don't know if the applicant, Larissa Lu Jean, is here. Hi. And you indicated that Justin Massey is here. Would either one of you like to step up to the podium and say something about the product, or perhaps help clarify? And address, especially my question about the tie-down?
Yeah, particularly, because that was one of my questions, too. If you could just expand that if this were to turn into a permanent structure.
Actually, if it's permanent, then that would go away.
The tie-down?
Yeah.
Well, that was one of my questions. I understood it to be that it said in the email that it's a, that...
I believe it was specified in the report that it will always be temporary.
I guess long-term is the word I'm looking for, rather.
Well, as long as it's under the medical hardship, then they can continue to use it.
Use it, but it always has to be in a mobile condition, and that has to do with...
Unless it's converted to the ADU.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
At which point, then, other things come into play.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, just that clarification that it's a long-term setup for supporting the structure.
So you are, Justin Massey?
Yes.
Hi. Thank you for stepping up. Please, enlighten us.
It is definitely a long-term setup. It's stamped and approved by the HCD, which is the Housing and Community people. So it's definitely a long-term thing.
So this will secure that manufactured home in the event of an atmospheric river?
Yes.
Okay. Good. That was my only concern about this. I, you know, understand the need and, you know, appreciate...
And I know we included pictures in it, too.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we saw the pictures. They were provided in the staff report. Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Would you, Ms. Lu Jean, would you like to step up and say anything about the project?
Thank you. So I'm very happy with the staff report and the way it was presented. There is one thing that I did want to bring attention to, and actually you'd brought it up. It is in Exhibit B, because this application and this process does require me to have an agreement with the city, and I actually wanted to bring something to your attention about having some of the wording adjusted. So let me pull this up here. Sorry, I have a couple of different documents here. So, starting out, Planning Commission's staff report, if you could bring your attention to that, please. On page four, and it is the third paragraph down, it states, "Of note, all structures approved pursuant to zoning ordinance Section 10-4-6E require annual inspections, including verification by a physician licensed that the hardship home is still necessary." I'm glad you actually had brought that up. What I did print out for you real quick here, it's not a long read, I highlighted the key point. It is 10-4-6E, and if I could pass this out to each of you commissioners, I've only highlighted one sentence real quick.
Provide that to...
Hand it to the bailiff.
To, to Ms... to staff.
Got a VIP bailiff.
Yeah, there you go. Earn your keep, huh?
Now I'm going to take one of those copies back, Mr. Morris. Sorry. Thank you. So this is the actual code that it's referencing in the paragraph. 10-4-6E, the very last sentence I highlighted for you. It states, "In all cases, the permit for mobile home use shall be re-inspected annually and must be terminated if the finding of hardship for which approval was given no longer exists." So we're going to pause there, and we're going to grab Agreement Covenant Running With The Land, which is Exhibit B. It says at the bottom, page four of six, if I could draw your attention to that, which again is the paragraph number two. It states, "The premises shall be inspected annually..."
Could you back up a little bit? We didn't follow where you're referencing.
Okay, I'm sorry. It's, I think, the, well, bigger still.
Oh, Exhibit, yeah.
Yeah.
Page four?
Agreement Covenant Running With The Land, yes, page four.
Okay.
Let me know when you're on page four.
Okay.
And it says Exhibit B at the top.
Right, so that's...
Yes, so I wanted to focus on the words here. It states, "The premises shall be inspected annually, and the property owner shall, on an annual basis, provide written verification from a physician licensed to practice medicine in the state of California that the medical hardship continues to exist." The code does not state that it was the premises that was to be inspected annually. It is the permit that needs to be inspected annually and the reason for the permit. So what I am asking as part of my agreement with the city is that the language that's written in the code is what should be written in my agreement. I am not okay with subjecting the ADU to an annual premise inspection. That means someone would come onto the property, someone would have to go into the ADU where my disabled mom is located. I also have two younger brothers who will be living with her, my siblings. They also have different disabilities. One of my brothers has a certified and trained service dog that will be living there as well. I do not think it's appropriate that this added language, that the premises shall be inspected annually, because that is not what the code states, and that is not how it is written. And I would like that language to be removed. I would be open to, as part of our agreement, perhaps that sentence could say, "The permit validation shall be inspected annually, and the property owner shall, on an annual basis, provide written verification from the physician." Because that is the reason for the permit, that that medical hardship exists. So I wanted to make note of that and actually show you how the code itself is written, that it refers to the permit and the reason the permit is valid, not that the home itself should be inspected annually. I don't know what the reason would be, that staff would feel that someone would need to actually come to the property annually and come into the home. They're not doctors. That's what the medical doctor note is for. If they feel that they need to come to the property to make sure we didn't put in a permanent foundation, for example, then that would make my agreement with the city null and void anyways, which would trigger a completely different process. So we have no intentions of doing that. We have to go through all the formal process to get this permit in the first place, but I'm not okay with that added language being in there, and I wanted to bring that to your attention.
Through the chair, if I may. I think that's an amazing catch. My guess is to staff that that was the use of the word premises.
Yes, I'd like to actually have staff go ahead and address that, since it's been brought up by the applicant.
Use the word premises versus permit was probably, yeah, a language, just a, we're used to inspecting premises, we're not used to inspecting permits, let's say. But there may be some more detail to this than we know of.
Yeah, basically, I think that when the language states premises, it's basically inspecting the temporary manufactured home. So we look, you know, we're renewing the permit. And so with any renewal of a permit, there would be some cursory review of the manufactured home just to ensure that it's still installed per temporary basis and such. We wouldn't be looking at, say, the main dwelling or anything really on the premises, but that's what it's about. We don't necessarily have to go inside the manufactured home, but mainly verify that it's still there in sound condition, and then we renew the permit.
This is a little bit, again, through the chair, if I may, this is a little bit different because the main thing is the validation for the basis of the temporary facility, right? The medical hardship. So that has to be revalidated on an annual basis. So the permit that we're granting has to be inspected and validated that way. I think the applicant's concern is about a physical inspection of the premises. And I think that we would need to be, we should be, to give them confidence based upon the concerns they expressed this evening. We should be very explicit as to what that inspection entails. I heard the applicant say that they...
Is there another ordinance that actually comes into play that describes this kind of inspection of the premises as kind of, as you described, Mr. Rivas, just from the outside?
The inspection would involve, we would verify satisfaction with the conditions of approval.
What does that mean?
It's more than just a middle of the statement from a physician.
Mm-hmm. So the statement of the physician would be submitted annually, and then the city staff would go and do an inspection from the outside to make sure that it's still using the tie-down, that a permanent foundation hasn't been put in place, or that the building's even there?
That's correct. Any of those changes that may have occurred to the structure.
Okay, well, I see that...
If I could direct your attention again, let's go backwards here. In the staff report, the...
Start at page four, please.
Yes. Planning Commission's staff report. Page four. I'm going to reread the sentence. Let me know when you're there and ready.
Yep, yep.
Page four, paragraph three. "Of note, all structures approved pursuant to zoning ordinance, Section 10-4-6E, require annual inspections, including verification by a physician licensed that the hardship home is still necessary." This inspection of the premises was based on 10-4-6E. I have provided that to you, and it does not state that the premises shall be inspected. It very clearly states that the permit for mobile home use shall be re-inspected annually and must be terminated if the finding of hardship for which approval was given no longer exists. And that is based on the medical note provided by a doctor, not inspection of the premises. I think this is an overreach, and I am formally asking you to honor...
You know, I think we're very sympathetic to this point that you've brought to our attention. It is very important. But I also ask that you take into consideration the needs of the city in this particular granting of the hardship. You know, you are not having to put this on a permanent foundation. You're using the tie-down system. You're being relieved of impact fees for, as part of the hardship. And so, you know, you are in some ways benefiting from this hardship, granting of the hardship and allowing this temporary structure on your property. So what I'm asking is, you know, could, now that you've heard what staff's explanation is about just doing a, from the outside, making sure that the house is still there, still using the tie-down system and so on, but not entering the house, could you find yourself agreeing with those terms?
I would be happy to agree with how the code is written. If you would like to replace paragraph two of my agreement with the exact phrase that's in the ordinance, I would be comfortable with that. Or in paragraph two on my agreement, which states at the top Exhibit B, instead of stating "the premises shall be inspected," that it say "the permit shall be inspected," which harmonizes with the code, 10-4-6E.
To that point, we can certainly harmonize the language, but that would not negate the fact that the inspection of the permit, in this case, means reverification of medical hardship and reverification of the safety of the structure. And so I...
Except that's not how the code is written, and that's added language that I am not comfortable with, which is what I'm expressing to you.
But you're requesting, at the same time, you are also requesting not a permanent mobile home, you're requesting a temporary structure.
Which is, I believe, sealed with skirting. So my question is, does that mean staff is going to come remove the skirting from the house in order to see that it's still in the same condition in which it was placed?
My guess is whatever best practices are for inspection, wire safety, plumbing safety, structural safety, they would do that. They would also have to replace it. But they probably have to get, they have to remove a panel, they got to get a flashlight, and they've got to look and make sure that the ties are still intact. Do you follow what I'm saying? I think that's what it's talking to. So it's a broader read of what inspection of a permit means. Now, I think premises is broad, because your structure is on a premises. It also includes a home and everything else. So I think that language could be redefined. But Pierre, I don't know who can speak to what this inspection would look like. I think it would be appropriate to be able to provide some level of detail or specificity as to what exactly the city, you know, would need to inspect. And I concur with the chair when she says, you know, the city's got to be concerned about safety and so on and so forth, and this is kind of a different sort of arrangement. So what exactly would that look like?
Well, the only way I can think of really where we can narrow this down is instead of stating premises, meaning the entirety of the property, that it would be the temporary manufactured home. We're not inspecting a permit. We're inspecting what the permit is allowing. I think that's a mis...
And the purpose of the inspection is to make sure that it is, A, in a safe condition, and it hasn't gone from a temporary installation to a permanent installation, right?
That's correct.
And that's all done from the outside and underneath, I'm assuming, yeah?
Yes, we don't need to get inside the building.
Okay, so maybe perhaps what we can do is we can provide clarification in our motion as to what exactly the inspection is for and how it would be conducted. And then, you know, we can grant this. It'll be up to you whether or not you want to use it. You follow what I'm saying?
I think I would be more comfortable with the wording, just simply mimicking what's actually written in 10-4-6E, because all of this extra conversation is unfortunately not what is written in the code.
Okay, and here's my challenge with that. We could do that, but then I'm afraid, and again, I'll be respectful, and I seem to be the real difficult one here this evening. I could see, I could see you, and you're very bright. I could see you and the city wants to come and do their inspection, you saying, no, you're only allowed to inspect the permit. Here's my permit, and here's my validation of medical necessity. You don't get to do anything else, and that will not meet the city's needs. The city's needs from the safety of the structure is, we need to see... The city's needs from the safety of the structure is, we need to see underneath the structure to make sure everything is still intact the way we approved it. Do you follow what I'm saying? So, if we just adopt that language-
I do follow what you're saying. My concern is that this is an issue of liberties being taken with the code that doesn't state all that you just said. And when that happens, I think that's when we run into overreach of the powers that be.
Well, I'm very sensitive to government overreach. My fellow commissioners-
I would be comfortable with just copying and pasting the language that's written in the code that your staff recommended to you, and this additional language be taken out, and then that's something I could happily work with staff on what that means and what that looks like.
Um, so, to, well, to staff, yeah, the problem is, if we approve it, then they have, they have the conditional proof in hand, then they want to go and work with staff.
It's how it's written in the code.
We can bring that back in our discussion.
I'm not asking for anything extra, I'm simply asking-
Chair, Chair Key, if I may.
To add the language that's in the code.
As with any permit, the permit is for a use, and there are conditions of approval for that use.
Yes.
We don't inspect pieces of paper. The only piece of paper that we inspect in this case is a letter from the physician, and we don't include that, we want to maintain the privacy of the applicant. But, this is a permit, like with conditional use permits or any other permit, there are other permits that require inspections. We're not inspecting the paperwork, we're inspecting the use, the premise-
Well, you've hit on something that occurred to me during this discussion, and actually, I think we can carve out some terms that address both the city's needs for health and safety and your requirement for privacy. And, Mr. Smith, you want to make a comment?
Yeah, just following the discussion, I thought it was very fuzzy, the descriptions of what the inspection would be, and I do think that needs to be tied down in order to address the concerns of the potential overreach, number one. And the second thing I'd bring to your attention is paragraph number six regarding attorney's fees. If it's necessary to litigate or-
What paragraph six? Where, what are you referring to? Which paragraph six?
We're all talking about the agreement covenant running with the land.
Exhibit B? Are we still on Exhibit B, paragraph six?
Commissioner Smith, are you saying that on attachment one, the condition number six, that the all utility connections shall be flexible and remain readily removable, that's part of the inspection, right?
I'm referring to the agreement covenant running with the land, is what the applicant would be agreeing to. The question is about paragraph six, which is the property owner, you, would be responsible to reimburse the city for all costs associated with enforcement, including attorney's fees. All, most all paragraphs I've ever seen like that, agreements like that, use the term reasonable attorney's fees, reasonable costs. And, I assume that, given the nature of the emergency agreement, et cetera, there's some family stress, I'm not sure if you consider the idea that if, just to use a really outrageous example, you've got a bill for an attorney charging $5,000 an hour, you're stuck if it remains the same. So, I just didn't, wondered if you addressed that thought about reasonable cost, reasonable attorney's fees.
I mean, for me, it's not a concern, because I don't intend to do anything with the property or the ADU that-
Yeah, number six.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't intend to do anything that I'm not supposed to, that would cause me to incur attorney's fees.
Yes, I-
There's a dispute over these issues that you all have been talking about.
Oh, I think you're presenting a worst-case scenario, and I'm not really sure how it's apt to our, the rest of our discussion, Mr. Smith.
Madam Chair, I think if you go to the recommended conditions of approval, and if we look at item number six, it says, "All utility connections shall be flexible and readily removable in accordance with city codes," that would be part of the annual inspection. So, in order to do that, I mean, the inspector, that's already in your conditions of approval, number six. So, we require, and this, I think, really gets to what the spirit, if not the letter of the law, certainly the spirit of the law, and Pierre is absolutely correct, we don't inspect pieces of paper. We inspect conditions, conditions of use. Your conditions of use, in this case, is the hardship. And then the second condition of use is that this remain in a flexible mobile condition and a safe condition, I think, that's kind of assumed, but we can add that, I'd probably add that to number six, in which case, those are consistent. Now, I totally concur that we can narrow premises down in condition number two and say that we're talking specifically about the structure to ensure that we can validate, verify number six, which is a condition of approval, because that's really the spirit of this inspection. You follow what I'm saying?
So, you're proposing in-
I would propose, if I made a motion, and I-
We're not to that point.
No, no, we're not.
Because I have some thoughts on this, I'd like to flesh out before we get to that.
Well, I want to answer her question.
Yes, so what was the question?
Okay, so, I want to, your question was, what would I, what's my thinking? My thinking is that in number two, we would narrow premises down to be specific to the structure.
Again, I don't want to get into too much detail, we're taking information at this point, I actually have some ideas at this point, I don't want to flood the waters too much.
Madam Chair, I still have the, I just want to answer the question.
Please, yeah, don't overextend this point.
I just want to ask, so, the issue, the issue that you've indicated, your concern is, you know, what does this inspection entail, you know, coming into the premises? And I concur with that, that's not what, that's not what the intent of the requirement in the code is, okay? We want to validate the permit, hardship and the use of the structure, okay? So, we can limit our inspection to structure, that, I think that'd be the direction we'd go. We still have to accomplish number six, so that's kind of it. I think, to shorten my point here, I think we've heard your concern about, you know, how broad, overly broad this may seem, and I think that we can narrow it and provide specificity. So, that's my point, Madam Chair.
Did you have any other questions for me?
Any other questions for the applicant?
Yeah, any more concerns for us, from you?
No.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much, and we appreciate you bringing this to our attention. Oh, do you have another question?
Just, I'm not sure it was addressed, and that is the document called Agreement Covenant Running With Land, something to be recorded with this property. And, you're committing yourself to pay costs if there's any enforcement required over this kind of language that might be ironed out in a few minutes. And if there is any dispute, any enforcement, you have to pay the cost, whatever bill is submitted to you, regardless of whether you think it's reasonable or not. You waived that opportunity, do you realize that?
Yes, I don't intend to put myself in a situation that would require enforcement to be used on this ADU property. So, unless you want to take number six out, I'm fine with that, too, but I doubt that that's what the city's agreements and tensions are. But, yes, I understand that that paragraph is in there.
Okay.
Yes. Does that answer the question?
It's up to you as to whether you agree to it, that's, it's up to you, not me.
Yeah, well, unless the city's willing to take it out, I'd agree to that as well, but I don't think that that's the case.
I'm not talking about taking it out, it's adding the word reasonable. If it's acceptable to-
Oh, adding the word reasonable, is that what you were stating?
I'm telling you that virtually every agreement I've ever seen about attorney's fees uses the term reasonable, or precisely the reasons I just illustrated.
I see.
You folks have been arguing over the kind of language for inspection. If there became a dispute over whatever terms these folks iron out, and there is an enforcement of that agreement, you pay the bill, regardless of whether it seems reasonable or not. That's, the question is that one word.
So, are you suggesting adding the word reasonable in there?
We can't do that.
Why what?
We can, we can consider that when we bring that back to discussion.
Like an individual discussion, rather than relevant to our at hand.
Okay, okay, I think we've covered point six thoroughly, and Ms. Lishman, again, I appreciate you coming down and working with us through these various points-
Yes, thank you.
-in the application. And so, if you'd like to sit down for a moment, I'll open this up to any other members of the public who would like to address the commission on this application. And if you would, please, when you're delivering your comments, please state your name for the record, we appreciate that, it's not required, but we appreciate that, and if you would, please keep your comments to three minutes or so. Good evening.
Good evening, Kathy Lishman, Placerville resident. When I read through this staff report and the part about, it's kind of a different topic than the last one, it relieves the property owner of impact fees, including water, sewer, traffic mitigation, and park. I mean, that is really a blessing to someone to be able to have that done. My question is, if it is no longer a hardship mobile home, and it stays there and becomes an ADU, because it's not really an ADU yet, is it required to have a permanent foundation and hook up to water and sewer and stuff like that? And then, the other thing is, well, I was kind of interested that someone stands up here and has a workshop with you two, that's usually not very normal. Usually, people make their point and then get it clarified later, too, but to negotiate with you up here right now didn't seem appropriate to me. This is a special use, and it's granted, and I don't see it as an overreach, because there should be findings and conditions. There is something that someone is getting that's really a blessing to them and their family, and I don't see that the city is trying to overreach in any way.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lishman, I appreciate your comments. Would anyone else from the public like to address the commission on this topic? Good evening.
My name is Amy Briggs, and I'm familiar with the family question, and I am well-aware of their need for this temporary use for their family, and it's actually really a personal issue to me, as I take care of a family member on my premises as well, so I just wanted to come and give my support for the project.
Thank you very much, we appreciate your comments. Would anyone else like to add their comments at this time? Good evening.
Yes, I'm Dave Massey, I'm the manager of-
Would you please speak into the microphone a little more correctly? Thank you.
All right. I'm Sebo Sytts here, and I just was gonna make a suggestion. If she was to do a permanent foundation, not only would you see incredible tract work and footings, the skirting would be removed, it would be extremely obvious if it was moved into a permanent thing, so the city could do a drive-by and almost get the exact same results as getting on the property, just to try to make everybody feel better. It'd be really obvious. And the electrical connections, their water's a PVC pipe, it's going to be exactly the same as permanent PG&E, if they come to the roof, it's going to be exactly the same. The septic line is going to be hard, plastic pipe, it's going to be exactly the same. So, the only thing that would be different would be a cement foundation around the home, and it would sit maybe a foot off the ground, and it would be very obvious from the street. I'm just trying to help out, that's all.
Well, thank you for your comments and your insight, and I'm sure, you know, this is a little different as far as the Planning Commission is concerned, we haven't had an application like this come before us, but our building inspectors, you know, perhaps they have more experience with that and what's required for inspecting. Is there any response from staff on those comments? No?
Any particular question you'd like to respond to?
No, I don't have any, I just, it kind of looked like you might have thought you wanted to share, okay, my mistake?
No, we were just, I was chatting with the city manager, there was, I thought the last speaker had stated that they were on a septic system, they're on city sewer.
They're on city sewer, okay, just to clarify that.
That we were chatting about, but, you know, city sewer.
Madam Chair, would it be possible to have Mr. Massey come back? I have a question for him.
Oh, I didn't know you had a question. Mr. Massey-
Sorry, I just had it in my processing.
Step back up to the, to the-
Oh, the one who spoke earlier, the young man with the nice cap. Yeah, thank you, you mentioned that this, this system met the requirements of, and you rattled off some, like, some letters or something.
The HCD, the-
What is the HCD? What, I'm sorry, do you need to speak into the microphone?
The HCD.
What is the HCD?
Housing and Community Development, they do, they're focused on manufactured homes.
So, there are standards?
Yes, there's-
So, this is going to be assembled in accordance with those standards? HCD?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you for that clarification, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, and since we had Mr. Massey step back up, would anyone else like to step up to the podium and address the commission? Good evening.
Yeah, my name's Sean Briggs, I'm familiar with them, but really, the point I was gonna make sort of ties into what was just clarified. If you're using a standard-to-code product, they've got a lifespan, there shouldn't really be a need to go and inspect it until it hits a point where it is up for inspection due to the materials used or the engineering statistics for the durability of the item. So, I don't really see a reason why, you know, besides the whole being able to drive by and check, I don't really see a reason why we should need to inspect the anchoring system unless it hits a benchmark that the manufacturer, the code, says it's questionable after this point. You know, we don't, if you install something permanently in your house, you don't have to have it re-inspected every year, so.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to add their comments for the record? Okay, seeing no one, I will close the public hearing portion of this item and bring it back to the Planning Commission for consideration and possible action. I'd like to start out, you know, this far-ranging discussion really did bring up a lot of points, and first, regarding Attachment One, which is the same as Exhibit B in the covenant running with the land, that agreement, they're identical, but the Attachment One to the staff report, recommended conditions of approval. It's my opinion that this is not, inspecting is not government overreach, this is a special use, as Ms. Lishman stated, we're calling temporary use, but the use of the word premises, I, you know, I'm not sure that we are wrong to keep that in the condition. What I think I would like to see is that we amend number two to add that the premises shall be inspected annually per the terms of the issued permit, and I think that, the addition of language like that, it both protects the city and our permit that we've granted for this temporary use, but also respects this need for privacy as expressed by the applicant, you know, and I, and I don't think that we should get much more specific on what the Planning Commission feels should be involved in an inspection. That's not our expertise, that is up to our building department, and the other requirements of the permit, that is up to our development services staff to make sure that that's being adhered to. And I hesitate to be more specific on what we state will be inspected, because then we establish a precedent, and we want to be fair to all applicants, and I think it is our job to make sure that the city's interests are protected and the privacy of the applicant is respected. But, these things, you know, we've kind of gotten hung up on the tie-downs, but there are other things that, you know, that may need to be inspected, and we just, we don't know, and we shouldn't even go down that road to be that specific. So, that is my thinking on this, and also, I would like to add to condition number two, that the submittal will be to development services, just to clarify and be very, yeah, to clarify and establish again a precedent. So, that's my feeling, I, you know, and I appreciate the people's thoughts about overreach, but, you know, I, we are granting, yeah, a special use here, they are not having to pay impact fees, and it is, the assumption is, it's a temporary, temporary use. So, those are my thoughts, and I'd like to hear how the rest of you feel about that.
I understood the word overreach not to apply merely to inspection, it was to the potential for what could be involved if these terms are not spelled out. For example, I heard Mr. Rivas talk about the emergency use, and if I understood correctly, the certification of a doctor once a year would do that, but there was enough ambiguity available from what the staff said- But there was enough ambiguity available from what the staff said that would entail staff being able to inspect the occupants and go inside-
Where is that? I don't agree with that ambiguity. Where is that? In the staff report or in the conditions?
Because the staff said at one point about the permit and gave an illustration of that being the case. It does not seem unreasonable to pin down some specifics. For example, the staff said that it would not be necessary to go inside the property. So if that's correct, and that's what the staff says, what's wrong with including that to specify it in what we're proposing? That's one example.
Well, case in point, then, I think leaving it more vague to put in the term, or the phrase, "per the terms of the issued permit," restricts what the city can inspect. It is, it's stated on the permit that's issued to them. And then it becomes, it's over on the city's side is what the staff, the staff is the entity that issues this permit, not the planning commission. So it's the terms of the permit. And I think permit terms are clear and well-stated, and the applicant has to agree to that.
Is the chair suggesting that the, when you say the terms of the permit, that that is limited to the temporary structure? Because that's not necessarily clear to me. And so, you know, I'll come at it from the applicant's perspective. Right now, on Attachment 1, and I think this is kind of where the heartburn comes from, it says, "The premises shall be inspected." And there's no clarification or specificity as to what the premises is. The premises, it's only got one parcel number, right? In fact, it's, and it's called out, the description is called out in Exhibit A, right? That's technically the premises. So really, I think our inspection, the inspection is, okay, is the permit, is this use still valid? Medical hardship, because that's a qualifier. And then, is this structure still maintained in a flexible and ready removable? That's the, that's the city's main concern. And then we can add the safety, because you're the one that brought up the safety about the atmospheric river, which, you know, okay, fine, but in order to do that, that means-
Well, my concern was addressed by Mr. Massey stepped up and-
You're not worried, you're comfortable that if it's installed according to the HCD standards, as was indicated-
HCD.
Huh?
H.
Oh, it's HCD. I'm old.
I heard AC.
I heard AC, but we'll call it HCD. According to these standards, if it's installed according to these standards, then I think, as the other gentleman mentioned, you know, we don't have to come back and re-inspect. But the city does have the need to inspect per Item 6 at the bottom of Attachment 1. But this inspection, again, is limited to the premises, which is being, the permit is given for. And I think that's getting to your point.
Right. I think we are in agreement that per the terms of this permit.
But I would simply, so we could probably have a little bit better language.
I think, actually, I think that does really sum it up, because I'm looking at the document that was given to us by the applicant. And as I read through it, I sort of interpret what she highlighted as being what the city is saying they're going to do, the permit for the mobile home use, which is the inspection, looking at Items Number 1 through 9, making sure they're still relevant. I feel like the word "inspection" is getting blown up into this, like, mom coming in your room and digging through your drawers. And it's really, I think, way more relevant to what the gentleman said of a drive-by, hey, house is there, the parking spot is there, nothing's changed significantly, it's still hitting what it is. And so I think this is a lot of over, a little bit of hysteria over something that is actually, to me, already listed in here as being part of the permit process. So at first, I was thinking of changing it to referencing the exterior of the home, but I actually like your language better, because I think it references the code, just like the applicant wants us to do, which, in my mind, allows for an external review of the application each year, of the permit, I should say, which, review of the permit is the same thing as going and looking and saying, are Items 1 through 9 still being met, which includes a visual, there it is, all right, we're moving on. That's how I interpret it. So obviously, this is open to interpretation. I interpret it as being in line with what we are proposing here. So I think my initial was to change it to say, the exterior shall be inspected, but I think referencing this, to me, seems appropriate.
Kind of in support of that language. Then, in Number 2, if we were to change, instead of the premises shall be inspected, this permit shall be inspected.
Which is what?
Right?
Yeah.
So now, we're not talking about the premises. We're talking about the permit. Well, what's the permit?
Which is what the applicant wants us to say, but that does not mean you also don't get a physical inspection. She wants, she was referencing the permit to me, and here's a piece of paper. I'm referencing the permit inspection to be, including this physical inspection.
Right, which also includes Conditions Number 6, right? That's all part of it.
Yes.
So we just change it to this permit? And I think that gets us right back on track.
To me, I think, like I said, they're what you had written, or the permit, originally, I had just had permit as the change, and then I went to exterior of the premises.
Because the permit's limited-
Basically, what I'm saying is I think-
Permit's limited to this structure.
I think everything that we're, the city is proposing to do, which I think is very basic, is being covered in both of these. And I don't see the need to make a lot of changes or details, because I think it's there, to me.
I'd be prepared to make a motion along those lines, for just, for the purpose of discussion, anyway.
Any other, Mr. Chair?
I just had, yeah, I had one more comment, if that's okay. I'm sympathetic to the applicant's note, especially about the staff report. So the staff report, obviously, is different than the conditions of approval. The staff report is referencing specifically this zoning ordinance section. And if you're going to specifically reference this zoning ordinance section, you should have the specific wording from that ordinance in the staff report. So I would recommend that we do take out the extra language in the staff report, which we are making part of the public record, to remove all the extra wording and just say, "Of note, zoning ordinance section 10-"
Where are you, sir? Sorry.
Sorry, Page 4 of the staff report. Paragraph 3, the one that the applicant was concerned about. I have no problem taking out all the, you know, the extra language. If we're going to be referencing a zoning ordinance section, we should just say what is in that zoning ordinance section, which is specifically, in all cases, permit for mobile home, you shall be re-inspected annually. So removing from the staff report also all of the extra language about structures being annual inspections of the, anyway, so I would just change that paragraph to specifically quote this.
I'm not following what you're-
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Page 4 of the staff report, paragraph 3. So taking out, so, "Of note, taking out all structures approved pursuant to, of note, zoning ordinance section 10-4-6E," and then just, "In all cases, the permit for mobile," and then just referencing that language that she highlighted from the actual ordinance.
Oh, I see. Just right after, "Of note,"
Yes.
Substitute the language that's in-
The actual ordinance.
The ordinance itself.
Yeah. If we're going to reference the ordinance, we shouldn't add extra language. We should just say what's in the ordinance in the staff report. Take out all the extra languages.
Okay, however, except, except however-
I don't either, but, so what you're saying is Paragraph 1, Paragraph 3 would say, "In all cases, the permit for mobile home uses shall be re-inspected annually and must be terminated if the finding of hardship for which approval was given no longer exists." Period. Approval of the hardship home? Keep that or?
Exactly. Yes, so just that, just that first-
Just that first sentence is mirroring, well, I don't think that's a huge issue, because it pretty much is the same language.
I'm just saying that the applicant is concerned about it, and I don't see why it's an issue to amend it, the staff report, to reflect her concern, which we're doing in the conditions of approval. I'm just saying that the staff report should have the same language.
However, at the same time, I would not want to eliminate that very last clause, which says, which require removal of the dwelling or permitting-
Oh, no, leaving that-
Which was, I think, one of the concerns expressed by, somebody made the comment, yes, it's in the report.
I'm only referring to the first sentence, the first sentence.
So you're only talking about the first sentence?
Hmm.
Okay, so you would just say, "Of note, in all cases," and then go through that whole thing?
Or just, yeah, "Of note, zoning ordinance section 10-4-6E,"
Require annual-
Requires the permit for mobile home use shall be re-inspected annually and must be terminated. And just have that-
And you would take out the verification by a physician, because that's only for this particular case, and that belongs over in the conditions of approval, not in the staff report, per se.
Precisely.
Okay, so I get that. I'd be happy to add that as part of a motion.
And that would also, it's mirroring what we're doing in the conditions of approval, and also addressing the applicant's concern about the staff report.
All right. Well, I'm going to take a gander at a motion, and then, just for the purpose of discussion, and then we can noodle it through. So I'm going to go ahead and move that we approve conditional use permit 24-05 for the hardship manufacturing home. Adopting the staff report is part of the public record. With the amendment on Page 4 of the staff report, Paragraph 3, that begins with, "Of note, striking all structures approved," and substitute, that first sentence, and substituting precisely the language from the code, 10-4-6E, the language at the very bottom of that, we don't need to insert the entire, just the highlighted language that was provided to us this evening. Okay. And then, adopting the findings as set forth in the staff report on page, beginning on the top of Page 6, Roman numerals 1, 2, and 3, Roman numeral 3, 1 through 6, and then, Attachment 1, modifying the language in paragraph 2, the second sentence, it says, it shall say, "Instead of the premises shall be inspected," we'll say, "This permit shall be inspected annually." And then, then everything else remains the same. That's my motion.
I have an amendment, if you could add-
If I could get a second.
Oops, sorry. I will second it. But I'd like to add that the letter, the verification for the physician is submitted to the City of Plaza Development Services.
Oh, yeah, thank you, I forgot that. To DSD. That was a good clarification. I accept that friendly amendment.
So we have a motion from Commissioner Friend, and a second from, who seconded?
I did, but I do have one more additional question.
Okay. Thank you. And, so we'll open it for discussion.
For staff, do you find, is that sufficient to meet the needs of your inspections, just like we've said, trying to find, does that motion allow for you to do what you need to do?
Yes, as long as it's understood that we are inspecting-
Correct.
What the permit is authorizing, not-
Right. But the word "permit" doesn't mean you're only looking at a piece of paper. The word "permit" means you're looking at the entire-
Everything in the permit.
I don't think it changes anything.
Perfect. Great. I understand. I think my-
That's why I used this permit as opposed to the, it's this permit. And then, I think Number 6, in the conditions of approval, you know, really get us where we need to go. And then, I just want to make a point. I disagree with the public comment that we're having a discussion with an applicant. I don't have any problem with that whatsoever, and I think it's incumbent upon us to be precise in our requirements and precise in our wording. And we're still, we're still meeting the city's needs, we're granting what the applicant needs, but we can be precise. I don't have any problem with the give and take whatsoever. I think as a representative of the city, I think, serving the public, I find that to be my role, so.
Okay. Duly noted. All right. Further discussion on the motion? Okay.
I have one more question. Who created this agreement, the covenant running with the land? Is this a city document that has to be filed?
Yes. That is a document that has been used historically or-
Okay. I must have missed it somewhere, so, okay. Thank you very much.
All right. All right. Ms. Hunter, please call the vote.
Vice Chair Carter.
Aye.
Commissioner Friend.
Yes.
Chair Keeney.
Aye.
Commissioner Lepper.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
All right. Five to zero. In unanimous approval. And to the applicant, Ms. Lujan, there is a 10-day appeal period, but we wish you good luck on your project and appreciate you coming down and working with us. I hope, you know, we've worked through your concerns and also protected the concerns of the city. So thank you very much. And I would like to take a five-minute break before we move on to the next item. So let us, all right, it is 7:34, and we are reconvening the planning commission meeting, and we'll move on to Item 10.3, which is a map amendment, modification of a building envelope, consideration of a map amendment for Lot 15 of the recorded Quartz Mountain subdivision. And this is, action is that for the planning commission to make a recommendation to the city council over the described actions. And I'll turn it over again to Ms. Hunter for the staff report.
Thank you. Just for some background, the Quartz Mountain subdivision Phase 1 was originally approved under TSM 86-02. The final map was recorded in February of 1994 and was amended on October 25, 1994, and again on May 6, 1995. All parcels within the subject subdivision have defined building envelopes to which all improvements are limited. Remaining area within each parcel is identified as private open space. The intent of the building envelopes was to maintain the physical features of the area, such as native trees, with high biological value as mitigation identified in the adopted mitigated negative declaration. Therefore, modification of the building envelopes is restricted. The subject request seeks to amend the approved and recorded subdivision map for the Quartz Mountain subdivision Phase 1, Lot 15, to reduce the green open space easement along Bedford Avenue from 50 feet to 20 feet, and move the building envelope closer to Bedford Avenue to allow for the construction of a driveway, 1,150 square-foot single-family dwelling, and a 625 square-foot detached garage. Figure 4 of the staff report illustrates the proposed future development of the parcel. Amendments of subdivision maps require the city council to find that the amended map complies with the subdivision map act and make specific findings, including, 1, that the change in circumstances make any or all of the conditions of the map no longer appropriate or necessary; 2, that the modifications do not impose any additional burden on the fee owners of the property; 3, that the modifications do not alter any right, title, or interest in the real property reflected on the recorded map; and 4, that the modifications conform with state law. The planning commission is charged with reviewing the application and providing recommendations to city council. Modification of the building envelope as proposed would allow for the development of the parcel. Currently, the building envelope and open space easement assume access from Quartz Mountain Drive. Given the slope of 45% or greater, the parcel along Quartz Mountain Drive, oh, sorry, reading that, the slope along Quartz Mountain Drive is approximately 45% or greater, and therefore would require quite a bit of grading to accommodate access and construction of the single-family dwelling. Therefore, development would be extremely difficult and likely impossible. Development of the parcel as proposed would be consistent with the general regulations of the R-120 zone, specifically maintaining the front yard setback of 20 feet along Quartz Mountain Drive and Bedford Avenue, the maximum building height of 35 feet, and the maximum building coverage of 35%. The amendment of the building envelope as proposed would not change the intent and purpose of the low-density residential land use designation, which is provided for single-family residential development. The amended map remains suitable for the type and density of the development, and the amended map remains consistent with the general plan. Therefore, staff recommend that the planning commission adopt the staff report as part of the public record, make the findings in support of the map amendment request, and 3, make the following recommendations to city council to take the following actions. 1, certify that map amendment 24-01, amending the Quartz Mountain subdivision Phase 1, is categorically exempt from requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to Section 15305; and 2, approve map amendment 24-01, amending the Quartz Mountain subdivision Phase 1 amendment based on the findings included in the staff report and subject to the conditions of approval included in Attachment 1. It should be noted that staff identified an error in the staff report. The APN of the parcel is incorrect and should end in 015 rather than 051. The APN should be corrected for the public record. This concludes staff's report.
Thank you very much for that report. Again, a kind of a unique, a different project for us to consider. I did want to clarify on Page 3 of the staff report, since it's to be adopted, the last paragraph, "Location of the subject parcel within Quartz Mountain subdivision," anyway, is provided in Figure 3. And again, as shown to the right in Figure 3, it's written in the staff report as to, I think you must have inserted additional photographs of the site as Figure 2, and the actual location within the Quartz Mountain subdivision is in Figure 3. Is that, is that right?
Yes, that appears correct.
Real minor correction, but since it does kind of play into the whole, you know, positioning and location, I thought it was important to make sure that we got that change. And I apologize, I didn't alert you to that before the meeting, I just caught it. And I apologize, I didn't alert you to that before the meeting, I just caught it. And other than that, this seems like a very reasonable request. Does anyone have any questions for the staff this time?
I do have one question for staff. In other previous applications, we would have language that says, approval of this request does not convey a benefit, not enjoyed by other property owners, or something similar to that. Do we need to add something like that? We often do. We don't need to do that, need to worry about.
It's not a variance request, it's amending a reported map.
Okay.
So it's not required in the findings.
Okay, all right. And it is adding to the housing stock, which is good, the potential for adding to the housing stock, so, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Mr. Smith, your, the light is on, your microphone, do you have a question? Oh, okay. Ms. Lepper, go ahead.
I'd now have to make a motion unless anyone else.
But first.
Oh, I'm sorry, did we not?
I know.
I'm sorry, I was like.
Cold and stormy night, right? This time, no other questions for staff. I'd like to, if the applicants are in the, if the applicants are in the audience, and would you like to step to the podium and highlight anything in your application or clarify, add any more information? Please state your name for the record.
My name is Salvador Clemente, and, no, we don't have anything to add to the record, it's just trying to get the bill, the House bill, and excited to start, be a part of the community.
And you are Mr. Clemente?
Mr. Clemente.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate you stating your name, so I can, to hear that. Does, do any of the planning commissioners have questions for the applicant about this? Okay.
Thank you.
Appreciate you taking the time to come down here. All right. Do any members of the audience want to provide comments on this particular item, 10.3? Seeing none, I will close the public portion of this.
Let me add him, let me add him.
There's no prize money associated with quick reactions on the buttons, but I'll bring it back to the commission for consideration. And Ms. Lepper, I think you have something you want to say this time.
I will say, I agree, I'm excited that this is a unique way to add to our housing stock. I think it's a good utilization of the property, and I appreciated the report and everything, and I had no, no major questions or concerns.
Are you making a motion?
I would like to, but I don't want to. I really jumped the gun there.
Feel free to make a motion at this point.
Second.
Wait, 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 we don't have a motion.
Call the roll, no, okay, so, and just to clarify.
Wait a minute.
The end of the APN is 015, you said, not, okay.
015.
Yeah, okay, so I'm going to reference that in the thing, okay. So I would like to make a motion to adopt the staff report as part of the public record, to make the following findings in support of MA 24-01, including that it is exempt from environmental review, guideline section 15, 305, oh, let me just say, the approvals, the conditions of, make the following findings in support of the request, items number one through six, on pages five and six of the staff report, and make the following recommendation to city council to take the following actions. Certify that the map amendment 24-01, amending Quartz Mountain subdivision Phase One, is categorically exempt from the requirements of SEQA pursuant to SEQA section 15, 305; and two, approve map amendment 24-01, amending Quartz Mountain subdivision Phase One, based on the findings herein and subject to the conditions of approval, included in attachment one of the staff report. And that includes the request to amend the APN number throughout the report, which is on page one, two, and six that I saw, to reflect the APN as being 050-601, 610-015.
Well put.
Try, I try.
We have a motion.
Second.
And we have a second from Chair, Chair, from Commissioner Friend, it's too late. All right, a motion, a second. Further discussion?
I will just make a quick comment that I did go by the site, and I totally agree that this is necessary, given the topography of the, of the lot. And it's important to note that this green space is already pretty much clear, there's, and I think I've read in the staff report, we're only going to lose a couple more trees on the lot, so I think this is a win-win for everybody, so fully support the motion.
Very good. Any other comments? Okay, Ms. Hunter, would you please call the vote?
Vice Chair Carter.
Aye.
Commissioner Friend.
Aye.
Chair Keeney.
Aye.
Commissioner Lepper.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Okay, five oh, unanimous vote. So is this appealable? No, this going to the city council? So this is a recommendation, and want to thank the applicant again for coming down here, and have a good evening. Good luck with your project, and we appreciate you adding, you know, a home to the Quartz Mountain subdivision.
Question, staff, any idea how long it'll be before it gets to council? Will it be this year?
We could try and get it on to December 10th.
Okay.
Meeting at the earliest.
Okay.
If not, it would be the first meeting in January.
January, okay, just for the benefit of the applicant, yeah.
All right, thank you for that. We'll move on to 10.3, the map, no, that was 10.3, 10.4. This is a variance, 24-2, for the Mickelson fence, consideration of a variance request within the low-density multifamily residential R2 zone. And again, I turn this over to Ms. Hunter for the staff report.
Four for four. So planning commission approval is required for all applications requesting a variance from any regulation of Title 10 of the city's municipal code. The subject request seeks approval to construct a 200-foot-long redwood fence along the southern property boundary of the parcel, addressed 3076 Gold Nugget Way, with a minimum fence height of seven feet and a maximum height of eight feet. 3076 Gold Nugget Way is zoned low-density multifamily residential, or R2, with an established legally non-conforming single-family use. Construction of a fence not taller than six feet is permitted by right within the required yards of property zoned R2. The subject parcel is sloped, limiting development on the parcel, resulting in the need for an increased fence height. Construction of the fence, as proposed and conditioned, shall not be detrimental to the public interest, health, safety, convenience, or welfare, and is not injurious to neighboring properties. It is the opinion of staff that the commission can make the necessary findings to support the variance for the setback and height of the fence. As such, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt the staff report as part of the public record, make the findings in support of the variance request, and conditionally approve variance 24-02, based on the project information and findings, and subject to the recommended conditions of approval included in attachment one. Prior to the meeting, staff did receive a written public comment on the project. Copies of the comment were distributed to the commissioners prior to the meeting, and copies are also available at the back counter. This concludes staff's report.
Okay, thank you very much. Does anyone have a question for staff about the report?
Would it be inappropriate to carry over, on page four of the staff report, at the bottom, number three, that the granting of the variance does not result in special privileges, carry that over as a finding on Roman number, Roman number two on page six? Because we, that's usually where we have that, we keep that as a finding. It's in the staff report.
Wait, can you repeat, I'm sorry, I was trying to follow.
Okay, so you're on page four, and number three, right, at the very bottom?
Special privilege.
Yeah, so, so just taking that language and copying it over.
It's included in finding number two. The granting of this request is not.
You know, I guess, I guess I should read more carefully. You missed it, too. Oh, Commissioner Carter told me to ask the question.
Okay, now you two stop throwing each other under the bus. Okay, well, I'm glad we got that clarified. Any other questions for staff? Okay, seeing none, is the applicant in the audience? Hello?
Lone Ranger.
Would you mind wandering out to the podium, maybe? Stretch your legs, good evening, Mr., is it Mickelson or Michelson?
Mickelson.
Mickelson.
Yeah.
Thank you for coming down, spending a good portion of your evening, I don't know how long you've been sitting back there, but welcome.
Thank you.
Anything about the application you'd like to tell us, add to at this time?
No, not too much, I just, it's a sorely needed improvement to both properties, and given the slopes of both angles of the properties, it provides that additional foot of privacy that we're really hoping for, keeping it very segmented, plum-level and square, as opposed to just a dog-eared thing going up the hill, is my hope.
Yeah, I like the diagram that was part of the submittal, showing that you're going to take that step approach as opposed to running with the grade, that is a nice look. And thank you so much for coming down here and saying the word privacy, because it's not in the application, and that gives me a lot more confidence about the application. I'm looking for a reason. The reason given was, you know, a level fence, okay, so that looks good. I have a steep slope at my property, I've got six feet, I've got pretty good privacy, but, you know, that's, that's me, what I needed to hear was from you. And the only thing I'm going to say at this point, had that been in the application to begin with, and that gives the public a chance to comment on it, but, you know, I think it's perfectly acceptable for the commission to take this new information presented this evening, make it part of our public record and part of our deliberation, so, and I think I'm saying this just to highlight to the world, the planning commission, we really appreciate people coming down here and talking to us, so, thank you. Do any other commissioners have questions or any comments for our applicant?
No, just echo, thank you for coming down. I'm, I get really cantankerous when an applicant doesn't show up. We often have questions, so, thank you for being here, and your patience. The wheels of government, they grind slow, but they grind fine.
Thanks for having me, I appreciate you hearing me so soon. It could have been next year, I'm starting to build the fence, but with the winter coming, the weather coming now, it's really important that I get this thing going and done, so thank you.
Okay. All right, you may step down from the podium, again, thank you, all right. Would anyone in the members of the public like to comment on the item before us? Okay, I'm getting a little punchy, a little facetious, so I'll close the public hearing portion of this item and bring it back to the commission for consideration. I would like to somehow incorporate in the findings, since it's not part of the staff report, or the application itself, I never saw the word "privacy," and I think that's important for us to put in the record that that's the reason. I think the reason for, you know, aesthetics and level and the wording that was used in itself is not sufficient, in fact, it, you know, and I want to avoid this, granting a special privilege.
My, I understand the logic, Madam Chair, and don't disagree, however, I'm not sure putting it as a finding is appropriate, because unless we've gone out there and seen from his porch or whatever that it would provide the privacy, I'm not sure we can put it as a finding. However, we could probably add somewhere in the staff report that the applicant indicates that the fence would provide needed privacy, difficult to otherwise obtain, because the topography of the land.
How about it?
Madam Chair, if I may.
Yes.
I just want to add that a variance is a little more prescriptive in regards to the findings that the city's required to make. It's actually spelled out in, in the government code, under state planning law, so these are, these are the findings that you make any times you're granting a finding. We don't get fine-grained into what the applicant's perceptive is, as far as the privacy, but we're actually not looking at what he's trying to seek, but is it counter to, is it a granted special privilege? Is it something other property owners couldn't enjoy, those kinds of things, but it's very, very prescriptive. And I just want to caution the planning commission, I wouldn't get too much into modifying the staff report. The staff report, unless there's something grossly incorrect in the staff report, you know, we're not supposed to be modifying the staff report.
Okay, I appreciate that. So you understand my concern for, now we have a bit of new information, that it's important for me to have confidence that we aren't granting a special privilege. So do you think we should just stay silent on the matter, or do you think it would be more appropriate to add it as one of the planning commission's?
But it says, I think what.
I'd like to hear what Mr. Rebus has to say to my question first.
Yeah, attachment one and number one, you know, it's stated, is within the conditions of approval, but basically they have very generic, and in number two, due to the existing built nature of the site, surrounding area, project site topography, and I think topography is the main reason why the applicant is looking at having a fence, you know, seven, possibly eight feet in height, because it is a steep slope. He doesn't want, as he called it, dog-eared up the slope, but a nice fence that basically stair steps up the slope, so that's the purpose for it.
So just the fact that topography is included in one of our findings covers us and gives us a good, a strong basis?
Yes, it's finding number two.
Okay.
So all of that should be well-supported in the staff report that gives the details of the slope and the conditions of the property, without overstating it in the findings.
Okay, I appreciate that. Now, before I turn it over to Mr. Friend, I think, Mr. Smith, you have this open first.
Just quickly, concurring with what Pierre said, I think that does address your concern, because the topography necessarily is going to be higher in order to implicitly protect privacy.
Okay, thank you, and now, I can't remember, Mr. Friend?
Yeah, just as Pierre indicated, topography is an accepted finding for basis for variance, and we've used that. And I'm prepared to make a motion to approve the project.
Okay, then, let's.
As long, I was just going to say that I don't agree with adding privacy, just because I think it's a hard thing to define, and I think it could be a slippery slope of people saying, like, using it for reasons other than, I just think it's a little vague, and I did think that the topography was good enough for me for the variance, so I don't think it's necessary.
I'd move.
Prepared to make a motion?
I'd move approval of variance 24-02, Mickelson fence on APN 325-290-025, adopting the staff report as part of the public record. With the discussion findings as provided therein, and specifically the findings on page six of the staff report, Roman numeral two, that the request is exempt from environmental review, and the project qualifies for categorical exemption, et cetera, everything that's written here in the staff report with no amendment.
I will second.
We have a motion and a second from Mr. Carter. Any further discussion? And we did, we did acknowledge that we received a letter from Sandra Ainsworth.
There were two letters of approval, I think, and I, I need to amend my motion, because we have to include attachment one, recommended conditions of approval, which I forgot to do, that were also included.
Did not.
We have recommended conditions of approval, one through seven, those need to be, those need to be adopted as well, so I have to amend my motion.
I accept the amendment.
To include those conditions.
Oh, I thought that was included.
I sent Roman numeral three.
Action.
Oh.
Didn't you say one through three?
Well, I want to call them out, yeah, okay, they are included, but.
Number three.
We'll just call out attachment one, conditions of approval, items one through seven.
I accept the amendment.
Okay, so, the motion stands and is still seconded by Mr. Carter, and the second, let's see, I, did we receive a second letter tonight?
I thought there were two, I thought I saw two letters.
There was one that.
There was two written comments.
Oh, for the other.
For 10.2.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm confused.
And then there was one letter submitted for 10.4.
All right, there's, okay, sorry, yeah, there was at least one letter, okay.
To avoid any further confusion, Ms. Hunter, would you please call the vote?
Vice Chair Carter.
Aye.
Commissioner Friend.
Yes.
Chair Keeney.
Aye.
Commissioner Lepper.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
All right, five oh, unanimous, and not surprising. As you know, this action is subject to 10-day appeal, and however, not controversial, and we wish you good luck with your project, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you all.
Everything's good.
Now we move on to 10.5, zone change agricultural-commercial zoning district, consideration of a request to amend the zoning ordinance to add section 10-5-26, creating the agricultural-commercial zone district. And this is Mr. Rebus's item, so I'll turn it over to you for the staff report.
Yeah, thank you, Chair, members of the planning commission. To give a little history, the City of Placerville general plan was adopted back in 1990, and then shortly thereafter, the city adopted the zoning ordinance in 1991. So I believe there are 17 general plan land use designations that exist, and then we have 23 zoning districts. land use designations that exist. And then we have 23 zoning districts, and that includes overlay districts that implement those land use designations. So, the general plan's a policy document. The zoning ordinance is, of course, adopted by ordinance, specifies, you know, uses allowed by right, uses allowed by conditional use permit, and the development standards. So, for a reason unknown to staff, there was never the creation of the agricultural commercial zone district to implement the agricultural commercial land use designation. And so, that is what's before you. So, we provided you a copy of the applicable section of the general plan of the agricultural commercial land use designation. And then it, basically, we created then the agricultural commercial zone district that mirrors the general plan. So, there's no inconsistency or issues with that. I think the reason why we want to move forward and create this own district, one, because we should have it because it's in our general plan. But number two, the city has been working with the Placerville Economic Advisory Committee. There's actually an annexation subcommittee, and they're working with some of the property owners within the Smith Flat area. And some of those areas are within, but some are also outside of the city's sphere of influence that are in agricultural production. And so, if the city seeks to either amend or enlarge its sphere of influence, or to conduct an annexation, it's going to have to zone those properties, especially pertaining to the ones that are outside the sphere. So, typically, properties that are located within the city's sphere, we pre-zone those properties. So, they're given a land use designation and a zone district so that when they annex, they're already zoned something. But for those properties that are outside, and we've heard expressed desire of some of those ag lands that lie north along Jake Way outside of the sphere, that are in ag production, that they desire to, in the future, possibly annex into the city. So, for that to happen, the city would need to have this agricultural commercial zone district to reflect those land uses. For example, the winery, you know, or wineries. I think there's more than one that in the past have expressed maybe they would like to be considered for annexation. So, that's really the purpose of this, to have that for the ready in some future time. Fortunately, I don't get to participate in that annexation. It sounds like an exciting, you know, planning extra-
Can always come back.
...to be involved in. But at least I, you know, have this little piece. So, since this is a legislative act, you would be making a recommendation to the city council. So, it's staff is making a recommendation. Now, I will refer, I had to wing this because I forgot my script. But I'm going to look at the recommendations that we're going to, that staff recommends that the commission makes. So, we are recommending you adopt as part of the public record, the staff report for this zone change. And we recommend you forward to the city council, find that the draft text amendments to Title 10 of the city code under Zone Change 2408, adding the agricultural commercial zone district is exempt from SEQA pursuant to the sections listed there. I'm not going to read off those, all those numbers. And number two, we recommend that the city, that you would recommend that city council approve Zone Change 2408, adding to the city code, Section 10-5-26, the agricultural commercial zone as described in Attachment 1 of staff's report. And we also provided with you the table of contents where we would add that in to the zoning code as well. So, that concludes staff's report. I'll be happy to answer any questions you-
I'll second that motion.
Wow, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I do have a question for staff.
And I had a question about the process, actually. You know, this is a matter of making things, documents conform with one another. And as you pointed out, it, we're getting, we're approaching the need to have this in place. You know, we haven't had a necessity, and we may not, we don't have an immediate necessity, but you can see it coming. My concern is that there aren't the development standards on what's, numbers and sizes of animals and things like development standards. You alluded to that in your staff report. We don't have those as far as I'm aware. And the reason I feel that way is that we had the downzoning item come before us sometime this year, this fall. And I was concerned at that time of, you know, we had an applicant who had a plan, and, but once you downzone, then the use continues in perpetuity. So, at what point does this city develop those standards? And because I feel that they should be in place very, fairly quickly so that we, again, are in conformance with our general plan. You know, the purposes in Attachment 3, provide for agricultural uses. And then number three, really jumped out at me, protect the watershed lands and open space values. And we had a bit of a discussion with that downzoning application. You talk to any lamb manager, and, actually, just the, especially grazing, has impacts on watershed. And then also, also open space values. So, that is my concern about this, is that we don't have the supporting documents. I agree with, you know, the approach here. We're trying to put things in conformance. But can you educate us on when, how quickly can those development standards, those numbers, be put into place?
Well, the agricultural zone district has section, subsection D, and that's on page, page one of the proposed ordinance. And those are the general regulations they would be subject to. So, we're not going to put a limit on the number of animals that somebody can have on their property, because this would, this would be agricultural commercial zone district. I think comparing it with the other cases before you, that was changing, I think that was from R 120. So, that was like a half acre residential lot. And she was looking at, she wanted to have mini horses. And so, the RE, the residential estate zone district, does allow the keeping of animals, having farm animals, horses and such. And so, the reason why that particular application basically was not continued at the council was because the state passed a new legislation that said that if the city downzones any residential property, in other words, reducing the potential for a number of housing, in this case, I think we were going to lose six, seven units, was our estimate, that we then had to find other property and upzone for at least an equal or greater amount for those houses lost. So, it really, I don't think it fell because of the number of horses that somebody was going to have on the property. But I think-
No, that was, that was my objection. And that, it's, now we're getting back to my concern about numbers, sizes, and specifying that. So, that's what I'm concerned about, establishing this zone without the supporting document to protect the land, to protect the adjoining neighbors, so that, you know, they have a sense of, you know, what the impacts would be on their property.
It's nuisance-driven. It's individuals, property owners have the right to the use of their, reasonable use of their property, as long as it does not impact a neighbor's reasonable use of their property. Okay? And it wouldn't matter, it's like when I had my brewery here, right? Okay, I, noise and smells and whatever, that's what controls it. An individual owns property, they're allowed to use the property this way. And if they use their property in such a way that it impacts a neighbor negatively, then that's the nuisance. And that's, that's the enforcement component. That's why we don't set a number-
But that's a nuisance. You know, I'm looking more broadly at the language from our general plan, which, again, it needs to be, it's a general plan. It is a broad-based document. Protecting watershed lands and open space values, these are, you know, these are important to our community.
But once an individual owns the land, they get to use the land that's consistent with, they get to use the land consistent, no. This is the overreach that somebody earlier-
And, you know, that is, that is your opinion of-
That is absolutely my opinion. That's why I'm here. If the individual owns a piece of property, they get to use their property consistent with the zoning of that property. And we do not micromanage them.
No, it's not micromanaging. Where, this is, to me, this is, the philosophy of planning is, is protecting the land and, in perpetuity. If you allow too much grazing so that the land is impacted and the watershed is affected, you know, that-
I get to negatively impact my land if I choose to do so. It's not wise. But I get to negatively, I do. I do get to negatively impact my land.
I disagree.
I can concrete my land. If I want to con, if I want to pave my land, I can concrete it.
Only to a certain extent. We have coverage issues, we have all sorts of-
To the extent, no, that's for commercial. To the extent that I don't cause water running off to my neighbor's property, okay, I have to control the drainage. But if I want to have a concrete palace, I get to have that. That is, that is, that's, that is the, and I can't think of the word, but that is the privilege of private property ownership.
No, that is not respecting our responsibility. That flies in the face of planning. Planning is to allow people to have reasonable use of their property with, not to the detriment of the property itself or to the neighbors. And we have things like-
I think, I think that's an applicate, that's an overlay of a value that unfortunately is not supported by law.
I see, I do see both of you guys, yeah.
Chair, if I can provide some comments, it may help. So, first of all, we're just, we're just creating the zone district. We're not applying this to any property. But if you look at the existing zones on these ag lands that are currently within the county, they're not going to restrict the number of animals. This is very much in line with what is presently occurring on these lands, the flexibility of agricultural pursuits. If we all of a sudden make it too constraining, they're not going to want to annex.
I, you know, this, this is a city, and we are of necessity more, more compact. And, you know, I just happen to disagree with that interpretation, county versus the city's needs to protect the lands that we have within our boundaries and our sphere of influence. And I think it's important to have these development standards. I'm not saying that they would be overly restrictive, but I think they should be defined. And so, my question to you was really just, how quickly can the city come up with those development standards? But it sounds like that's not, you don't feel that that's in the interest of the city.
You have the general, you have the general regulations that are there. This, this is the same that we have in all of our zone districts. So, my only counter to that would be, at the time that the city then pursues annexation and applies the zoning, there will be an environmental review of the impacts of those re-zones. And so, we'll be looking at the base, the base environment, which is what the land is currently used at, and is there a change in what they could do by right or by use permit, as opposed to what the county currently allows and what the city would allow when they annex, and we apply this zone. But right now, you're just creating a bare-bones zone district that mirrors exactly what's in the general plan, just like all the other zone districts.
So, what you're saying is that at the time that the annexation occurs, then that's when the further environmental review could take place?
Right. We would evaluate the environmental impacts. Typically, in these ag zones, you're not saying you can have this many animals and this much crop and this much-
Or camping in RVs also.
Vineyard on the whole parcel. Yeah, camping in RVs is a-
How many? Yeah, that, that to me, I think could be, could be very impactful. But you're, what you're saying to us is that that comes under a conditional use permit, once a plan comes before Planning Commission, to use the property?
Right, that's correct.
Okay, so at that point, okay.
Yeah, whenever there's a physical change to that zone district on a piece of property, which we're not doing here, this is not a map amendment. It's only adding this zone district.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Just like all, all the other 27 zone districts that are, 23 that's in our code.
Yeah, I appreciate that. That's the limit of the action before us tonight. So, thank you for clarifying that and addressing my concerns, too. Now, Mr. Carter, your light, did you have a comment?
I'm prepared to make a motion if nobody's opposed.
No one else has a comment?
I'll do it. How's that? So, my question was-
Could you speak in the microphone?
Pardon? That one. So, looking at this, page one of two, and it's the item, anyway, it's the agricultural commercial zone. And down here under D, density, maximum density is .2 dwelling units. And then the minimum parcel is five acres. So, I assume before you can get a dwelling on it, it's got to be 10 acres. Is that my correct math?
One.
No, five times .2 is 10.
One.
Pardon?
One for five acres.
One for five acres.
Five times .02 would be one.
One, so on, one dwelling.
One dwelling, it says .2.
On five acres.
And then a minimum of five. So, then you, .2 times five is one.
I got you. Okay. So, what do you envision for the kind of parcels that would be involved here? It's five acres. And how large can you imagine currently you'd have one of these districts, one of these zones?
Sorry, Commissioner Smith, I wasn't able to hear what your question was.
Okay. So, the minimum is five acres. Do you have a, an idea of a maximum, looking at the general overlay of Placerville city limits right now, what would this potentially entail covering? How large of a, of a zone would you be in? What kind of parcels would you be coming up with?
Some of those properties within the Smith Flat area.
Okay.
They're currently under ag, 24-carat, the, yeah, the winery, Starfield. I've spoken with that owner. And there was a time where, spent several years, that he expressed a desire to annexing into the city.
Okay.
And I can't think of how many acres this property is, but it's quite large.
So, this is contemplation of bringing those properties into the city?
Or into the SOI.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
I did have one thing. There's a correction on page one of two, on the draft, for any parcel under, is the Williamson Act?
That's correct. Good catch.
Not, it says Williams, so it just needs to be corrected to Williamson.
Williamson.
Just a typo there.
Yeah.
Make sure that that gets corrected as we pass this along to city council. Well, I would like the commission to consider adding another recommendation. We're recommending to find that the, according to the report before us, draft text amendments are exempt under SEQA, and recommend that they approve the zone change. But I would appreciate sending a recommendation that the city council considered drawing up development standards to address concerns that people like I have, and also to, you know, also respect the property rights that Mr. Friend is passionate about. How do the rest of you feel about adding a recommendation that goes along with this zone change?
I don't think it, I think it's kind of, goes without saying that they will develop the standards.
You think it is?
I do, I do. I think, to me, this is adding, like, on the computer, a drop-down menu item. And then that webpage still needs to be built, you know, but right now-
Right.
...we're just adding the dropdown option, to be determined, is, you know, the page error 5507, or whatever it is. So, to me, I think that we are, this is the first step. And I totally understand what you're saying, and I'm a fan of clarifications and details, too. But I think for the purpose of what we are taking action on, what you are saying goes without saying that it will be, I mean, that's the assumption, right?
In due course of time.
That's the hope, yes, yes, in due course of time. And when this starts being, obviously, if it gets implemented, it is going to need, you know, details. So, if you're, if you feel comfortable, that's how I view it. Like I said, adding the dropdown and then webpage to be built. So, does that make you-
Well, we will be watching this, yeah.
Yes, yeah. Well, it has to be, right? Because you can't just have nothing. It's, I mean, you can, right? But that's, the assumption is that, that's where I go.
I just want us to move forward, you know, in, rather than going back and, you know, reinventing the wheel or doing it over again at a future day, if we can make it just a little bit better as we move, do it the first time. That's all I'm seeking.
I totally understand where you're coming from. If you're really passionate about it, like, I don't think it hurts anything to say and develop appropriate, you know, coordinating guidelines. But at the same time, I really think it goes without saying, so.
Mr. Carter, you've got the light on?
Yeah, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay.
If that's okay with the commission.
Okay.
I would move that we adopt as part of the public record, the November 19, 2024 staff report for Zone Change 24-08, that we recommend to the city council that we find the draft text amendments to Title 10 of the city code under Zone Change 2408. text amendments, the Title 10 of the City Code, under Zone Change 2408, adding the Agricultural Zone District is exempt from SEQA under the sections listed here, and that we recommend that the City Council approves Zone Change 2408, adding City Code 10-526 Agricultural Commercial Zone as described in Attachment One, as amended, changing that word to Williamson, in, of Staff's, November 19, 2024 Staff Report, that is my motion.
Second.
Motion and a second.
Staff would like to make one quick change, if you could amend your motion. So, under, under Item Two and a Roman numeral two, where you're recommending to the City Council approve Zone Change 2408, adding to the City Code 10-5-26, the Agricultural Commercial Zone District is described in Attachment One, we would also add the Zone District to the Table of Contents, which lists all the Zone Districts, and that's 10-5-1.
I would amend my motion to include that.
I'll accept the amendment.
Technical, okay, we have a motion and a second, further discussion, none. Let's see, who gets to, I guess Ms. Hunter, you still call the vote on this, or do we turn it over to Mr. Reboz because it's his?
No, you're back to me.
Okay, back to you.
So, Vice Chair Carter?
Aye.
Commissioner Friend?
Aye.
Chair Keeney?
Aye.
Commissioner Lepper?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Five oh, and it's not appealable, wow, okay. Well, that was messy enough. So, it takes care of all our public hearings, and we're moving on to 11 continued items, which we have none, and new business, none. Moving on to 13 matters from Commissioners and Staff, we'll go to 13.1, Staff Matters.
We have a meeting scheduled for December 3, and we anticipate a meeting on December 19.
Do, will you anticipate?
December 19.
Third and 19th, okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
And I did send out an email to Commissioners if you could respond with your availability, I just want to make sure that we're not noticing for a hearing that we won't have a quorum. That's just looking through January.
And I'd appreciate the, yeah, that planning ahead of time, and I apologize if I haven't responded yet, I will do so as soon as possible.
That's okay, I knew I was going to see you guys, so. Updates on, I, the rest is, I guess, update, Staff has had conversations recently with the applicants for Fairfield Inn and Suites, they are off of Fornie behind In-N-Out, we're currently reviewing plans to give them comments for an official submittal, to make sure we have everything we need, because it will be large. Other than that, then I'll pass it to-
Use them both.
Double speak.
Good evening, Commissioners. I just want to mention to you, I, I know that you sent the memorandum to the City Council for consideration on historic preservation. I apologize, I didn't get that memo back to you, they're, they're direction tonight, but I do have a draft written, and you should have it at your next meeting, I just want to let you know that I'm not dropping it, I just have not got it completed yet, so.
Well, we appreciate your diligence, we know you have a few other things to do, and you'll get to it as you, as soon as practicable.
Madam Chair, question to the City Manager, if I might, since you're here. In addition to the things that we recommended, and I was actually going to bring this up under Planning Commission Matters, but I'll do it here, I think. In addition to the things that we recommended, we had a lot of discussion about other things that could be happening that didn't require action by, or necessarily approval by the council, and one of those was, and I know I'm a Commissioner, would be interested in doing this, and that was to research surrounding communities, Nevada City Grass Valley, Jackson, Sutter Creek, and so on and so forth, and, and to bring back information for discussion at the commission level on things, again, that we could do, the city could do, ideas that we could pass on to council that would help us in our charge, as sitting as the Historic Advisor Committee, and willing to do that. Now, the question then to you is, is there any possibility of getting mileage reimbursement if trips are pre-approved in advance?
I will say it's possible, I'd have to go look at that and see what our practice have been in the past, and whether we could do that. I won't say no, but I won't say yes, how's that?
Sure, certainly.
Good answer.
I may do it anyway, but, yeah, but, but I, I know for myself, and I think there's some other Commissioners that think, you know, it's valuable, and we, we take, we take our responsibilities seriously.
Interesting.
If I may, I didn't know, believe that you'd be here and presenting this issue, because one of the matters I wanted to present to you before, so I'm not putting you on the spot, but I will put you on the spot. After our meeting with the council, I talked to you and to the city attorney, because when we had this joint meeting, there was a discussion from the, the facilitator about the Secretary of Interior's standards have flexibility, and I think that that term have flexibility can be subject to lots of different interpretations. But what I got from the discussion with you and the city attorney is that we can pass a resolution that outlines standards for things like whether we would permit double pane windows, and under what circumstances, and what kinds. So, those are things that we can do that would be consistent with the flexibility of the standards. But you have to have standards, they have to be in writing. What Commissioner Friend has done, that I think is very commendable, is in a number of particular findings, decisions that have been made, he's made specific findings to distinguish how we rationalize the application of the rules as they exist now to a particular area, and that's helpful. It's a lot like the case law system, where you can go to a reporter's system and see what a court's done, but the problem is, with that approach, is that history doesn't last very long, these members won't be around in perpetuity. But we can't have public hearings on specific issues, like storm windows, and like whether we should have fire-resistant siding, and what kinds of siding would be appropriate. And we'd hear from professionals, we hear from people who are firefighters, people who are engineers and contractors, and then we could suggest to the council the kind of regulations that we would propose, and that would be consistent with what, what the city attorney said is permissible. That way, we would have specific standards, it wouldn't be this nebulous case-by-case kind of system, and I think we would ultimately have more respect for the final product we come up with, if we've heard from the public and all sectors to get expertise and, and then promulgate some regulations. Does that sound consistent with what the discussion was?
Yes, and I will say that I believe all of that, as you're talking about, will be addressed in this memo that I'm coming back to.
Okay.
Good, glad to hear it. Moving on to 13.2, Planning Commission Matters, this is for the commission members to update other members, and I had three things I'd like to bring up at this time. One, just, I'd like to thank and congratulate PIAC, they had their inaugural public, publication in our water bill insert, it highlighted, this time, the Placerville Food Co-op. On the reverse of that piece of paper, they talk about their mission to promote businesses in the city limits, and I think that is commendable, I think it's, it's quality publication, and I just wanted to publicly thank them for their effort, and I look forward to, to learning more about small businesses throughout the city. I think it's, it's a good reminder, and, and this is a good way to reach a lot of the public, at least get things, get the ball rolling in that area. I had a couple of questions for Staff on previous matters, the Mountain Mail project regarding signage, I was looking back through our ma, our notes, and they were due to submit a master sign plan to us, I just wanted to know if they were able to follow through and adhere to the terms, or if we need to remind them that we are looking for that master sign plan.
Staff is currently in the process of reminding them.
You have, all right. And another thing, the Burning Barrel facility is going gangbusters, and I recall that, I think I recall, I did not pull up my notes, but I think they were to lease two parking spaces from the city, and I didn't know if they'd follow through on that, but I think given the, the profits they must be enjoying at this time, that should be very affordable.
You have no idea what the capital expenditures are for setting up a project like that? Oh, my God.
Staff has not verified, we can check on that.
I would appreciate, because, yeah, it's, there are a lot of patrons, that's a lot of impact on that area, and that was part of our approval of their project, was for them to obtain, I believe it was two parking spots, and I thought they, we talked about the Ivy House lot.
Yeah.
On, on that topic, it seems to me that the south side of Main Street, it should be designated non-parking, it's not, but it should be. The south lane of Main Street is really narrow, the north side, so that would be the westbound direction, allows for travel plus parking, but, but it's not, there's nothing that says no parking anytime, or whatever.
There are actually different sized lanes?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, yeah. And so, you legally, in the absence of signing, you can park, park there, but cars going east really need to stop, and, and if, if somebody's coming the other way, so I, I would request that the city engineer take a look at that and, and see, and I'm not sure, there, there has to be width requirements or something, but it's particularly an issue with them when they're busy. One of the things I do love about that, by the way, in their design, the, the, the windows or the walls facing the street, they can open them-
Yeah.
You know, and so you're just, you're right there, and it's fantastic, I mean, it's, it's really, really good, so.
It was a really nice design.
I'll say, I, I went on Friday for the first time, check it out, and, and I agree, I share your parking concerns, and I actually had talked offline with Kristen about that, to just double-check and make sure that everything is, and I actually really appreciate that suggestion, because as that area is growing, it is getting more congested, it's getting really backed up. I live right there, too, so I know, I experience it regularly, so I really do appreciate that suggestion, because with that opening up and, and the parking being with it, what it is with them, I think those are both really good, relevant points, so, thank you. But also, very good, they did a great job, it's-
Ride your bike down there.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a very good, yeah.
Chair Keeney? I was wondering if you would allow staff to provide one more update?
Yes.
So, I'm not sure if you remember, but in the beginning of this year, a conditional use permit for a place of entertainment came before you, called the Prospector. We met with the applicant today, and he is hoping to open his business on Friday.
Wow.
The arcade.
Oh, yeah, yeah, in the old Soda Works building.
Okay.
Yeah, fantastic, I saw them working on the fires.
See some activity, yeah, okay.
Okay, good.
Great, well, good discussion, I appreciate everybody's-
I had an item, I just, I had an item under Commissioner Report, that's all right. First thing, I absolutely love this time of year, it's dark, and coming in, coming into town to the meeting, the lo, the lights on Main Street, it, it's just, it's almost magical, it's just really, 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 really great. This is just a fantastic time of year, I can't wait until the Christmas trees are up and they're lit. And, yours truly, opening night is November 29 for Miracle on 34th Street, I'm prosecuting Santa Claus, but, you know, anyway, invite you to come out to Local Imagination Theater.
Go get that, go.
I know that the Sunday show is already sold out, and, and it's filling up, so come out and see us, it's a lot of fun, so.
Great.
And the producer, Peter Wolf, used to be a planning commissioner.
And we're supposed to say break a leg?
Yeah, I'm hoping not. Yes, you're supposed to say that, and I don't plan to. Oh, yeah, I do have to dance at the very, very end, which was not in my original contract, no, I'm way in the back.
All right.
Who plays Natalie Wood?
Any other, any other matters from the Commissioners?
I would just commend his performance in the last, his first performance for Gone With The Wind, it was fantastic. So, I look forward to seeing 34th Street.
Yeah, fun.
All right. Having said that, it is 8:34, and we are adjourning the Planning Commission until December 3rd. Happy Thanksgiving.
Yes.
Enjoy your atmospheric river, or whatever you choose to call it.
Happy Thanksgiving.
And stay safe.